We'll call it a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for May 2, 2017, 4:30 PM. The order, first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, like you wish us.
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We got a motion and a second approved to consent agenda items, discussion on any? See and none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope, motion carries, item number 2A, public hearing to consider sanctions against Plaza Garibaldi Authentic Mexican Restaurant for a violation of their liquor license. Roger.
Thank you. President Schmitz, councilors, this matter is scheduled for a public hearing on the question of whether or not the violation occurred, and if so, what action the council will be taking. Communications I had with Mr. Boyle representing the licensee, my understanding is that they are prepared to admit. If that's the case, we would ask that, I believe Mr. Campo is here, if he could come up with counsel. Maybe I could direct the questions to him, we could get that on the record, and then the council can consider what the licensee or the public would have to say about appropriate Could each of you just identify yourselves for the record, please?
Michael Boyle with the law firm Berens-Rodman-O'Connor, attorney at law.
Juan Ocampo, manager of Plaza Garibaldi.
Thank you. The matter before the council for the public hearing is the question of whether or not, on August 10 of 2016, at the premises licensed by the city of New Ulm, if you admit that an unlawful sale was made by an employee selling an alcoholic beverage to a person who was underage. Whether you admit that or not?
Yes.
And Mr. Campo, you admit that?
Yes.
All right. With that admission, I think the council can move forward to conduct the public hearing, including, I'm sure Mr. Boyle has something to say on behalf of the licensee, or the licensee may speak, so I turn it back over to you, President Schmitz.
Okay. Go ahead, if you got some.
Yes, and again, we have admitted the violation, but before the, I guess, the council moves into the penalty phase of this, there's some things I'd like the council to consider, and I think it's, you know, they are worthy of consideration. First of all, this is a little different because, as I understand it, in almost every other case, there's been a criminal conviction of an individual really confirming the violation. Here, obviously, we've admitted the violation, there is no criminal conviction, but in doing so, in my conversations with Mr. Hipper, you know, it's really been, this is a convenience to the city, not having to get your witnesses here, pay officers overtime, et cetera, get the witness here from Mankato, who was involved in this sting operation. So that's one item. Another thing, and I had mentioned this in the letter I'd sent to the council earlier, it's a little bit deceiving when, you know, these two underage individuals are sitting at a table or a booth at the restaurant with two out-of-uniform police officers who the server recognizes as police officers, and rightfully or wrongfully, he kind of assumes that, you know, the police officers aren't going to let someone underage order alcoholic beverages. In this case, the server did ask for IDs, as I understand it, one young lady said, lied and said she was going to go out and get hers in the car, and obviously, she knew she wasn't old enough, and the other one just sat there. Now, the server made a mistake, without a doubt, he didn't see the IDs, and he brought beer to the table. But again, I think, you know, you can understand how someone would have this perception that people at a table, the same table with police officers, would be old enough to consume alcoholic beverages if they ordered beer right in front of the police officers. So again, it's, I'm not sure that's real fair to the servers and to the restaurant. Granted, the ultimate responsibility is with the restaurant, we don't deny that, but it was a little bit misleading in this case. Next, the, you know, the idea of the penalty here is really, I guess, to punish the violator, and that would be, you know, the restaurant. And just so everyone here knows, the, you know, the punishment is already happening because of the publicity in the newspaper, there's been numerous calls to the restaurant, you have your liquor license, there's been a noticeable drop-off in the customers to the restaurant, so in a sense, there's almost being a double penalty here because, not that the reporting has been inaccurate, but people believe that they don't have a liquor license, so they're not frequenting the restaurant, and then when in fact the liquor license is suspended, they will again suffer the loss of business. So again, they're kind of taking it twice here, in a sense. Also here, I guess, this isn't a case of an intentional violation, not that they have to be intentional, you know, the server did ask for the IDs, did not follow up, but again, this is a restaurant where people go to consume food, it's not a place where people go really to consume alcohol, they like to have a beverage with their meal, and that's, you know, what was happening here. And then the last thing here, and this has been noted in the newspaper, is the, you know, the council wants to know what the restaurant's doing, you know, to make sure this doesn't happen again, and of course, that's the important thing here, is that we try to improve the situation. You know, the restaurant has done, you know, they were on the best practices list, they have worked with law enforcement, I think our police chief could confirm that, the servers have completed training on serving alcoholic beverages, they continue to complete that training, they have to, they provide certificates to the management when they complete the training, and law enforcement goes out and checks with them, make sure they're complying, that's how they get on the best practices list. But, you know, Mr. Ocampo's told me he's, you know, going to double down on his efforts with his servers, and of course, the servers here turn over with some frequency, to make sure that they're following up and carding people, you know, confirming their ages if they're going to be serving alcoholic beverages. So I think, you know, there are a lot of circumstances here that would warrant maybe a lesser penalty. I had sent the letter earlier asking for Mondays and Tuesdays for consecutive weeks beginning July 10, and for a penalty of only 10 days. Again, I'm asking for that, for the reasons I've mentioned, which I won't go through again, and, you know, the council does have a history of accommodating or businesses in such a sense that, you know, they don't suffer too severely from this. You know, the best example, I suppose, is the incident at the fairgrounds, where, you know, on August 12, 2015, there was an incident, they were found, they violated their liquor license, the Brown County Egg Society, and the council suspended their license from December 25 through December 29. You know, I'm not sure how much alcohol the agricultural society is selling between Christmas and December 29, but that was a penalty that the council imposed. So, you know, we're asking for a little latitude here as well, that the penalty not be quite as severe as the full 15 days, and that be, it be served in a way where, you know, it's not a great cost to the restaurant, because they do want to be, and they try to be a good member of the community here, and run a good place. So if the council has any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them. Mr. Ocampo's here, he'd be happy to answer any questions you might have as to any part of this.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, it's a public hearing too, so we, if there's any other, anybody else?
Anybody, the audience have any questions?
Comments?
Mr. President, I'd like to maybe try and correct something. The statement in behalf of the licensee that the server asked for identification from both of the underage people, I think if we would have gone forward with the evidentiary hearing, the witnesses would have testified that he only asked the female, and I think that's, that's a distinction, they were not both asked. The female, he's correct, female did represent that she had it in her car, testimony would be that before she came back, the beers were at the table, four beers, two for the officers, two for the underage people. So the serving had been completed, and the other underage individual had never been carded. So to the extent the female was asked, I think that's correct, but not the other individual. So that's, I guess, the only other comments I wanted to make.
Anybody else have any comments?
Guess, Juan, of all your staff, is it 100% have gone through the training, or that you can say as of today?
As of today, everybody's in train, and usually, you just given the period 30 days, since the day they start, just to complete all the training online, and then make sure that they signed that they took the training, and then go through most of the points with them, and that's how they do it.
Okay. Do they do refreshers yearly?
Every year, we go to Brown County when they offer the classes, but they do online.
Okay.
Yeah, step up the mic, please.
Name and address too, for the record.
Audrey Shanaman, New Ulm Area Chamber of Commerce, 1 North Minnesota Street. My question is for Mr. Ocampo. Juan, tell us, what's the, how is the rest of the staff, are they understanding the severity of the situation to your business?
Right now, they do understand, and they worry, and that's the reason why I think they put in a little more effort, because obviously, we all, all of them, and we all are suffering the consequence, and they know. So right now, everybody just try to do the best, and I have meetings twice a week with them, just to refresh every time, though.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Chair, I know that goes without saying that we have a restaurant here that's well-respected, it's got great food, it's got great service, that's not the question here today, the question is, the issue is, this is the third alcohol violation for this restaurant, and a fourth one, they lose their liquor license. That's according to our rules and our code. So this is an incredibly serious violation, and this was talked last, at our last meeting, that doing a non-consecutive consequence is probably not severe enough at this level, with having three violations in a fairly short time period. I'm glad to hear everybody's trained now, I'm glad to hear that that's happening, but with staff turnover, and it's a constant issue, I'm guessing you've got to deal with as a manager.
So I guess it boils down to, as Roger can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking at $1,000 fine, 15-day suspension?
The ordinance provides for, the code provides for, a penalty grid for a third violation, states there's a $1,000 fine and 15-day suspension. The body of the code states that it can, the council can impose a civil fine up to $1,000 and/or the 15-day suspension. So I think you would have the discretion to do anything within that range. You can impose both. I think in the past, there has been provision made for the suspension days being served within a timeframe. I think it would be appropriate if the council was going to consider that, whatever the days would be, and whatever the timeframe would be, that the licensee would be expected to report to the city when the suspension is going to be taking place. So the city and law enforcement would be aware of when this is actually going to be in effect. Or you could just state the days, I mean, you've got the ability to do that, too. If you want to try and accommodate the licensee, it would be possible to have it done within a timeframe.
Well, as Counselor Mack pointed out, our license, this license is valid till June 30, so a sanction should be applied prior to that date.
That would be correct, Counselor.
Makes sense.
Good point, yeah.
Well, is that, I guess I question that, what if the violation had occurred June 22, and the council couldn't consider it till after June 30, then are you saying that they couldn't impose a penalty? Because it'd be, I mean, I don't think it should be imposed before June 30, I don't think it has to be imposed before June 30.
Probably doesn't have to be.
Well, assuming that the licensee would apply for another license, if he doesn't have a license, there's nothing to take any action on.
That would be true.
But assuming that he'll want to keep his license.
I think we can assure you that he is very interested in keeping his liquor license, beyond June 30. Anybody else like to be heard? The audience, or? I guess not, I guess it's up to us.
You want to close the public hearing, or?
I recommend closing the public hearing, and then I think we should hear from each of the councilors and make a decision, be my recommendation.
Do we have a motion?
I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We got a motion and a second, close the public hearing, any more discussion? See and none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope, motion carries. All right. Now we'll go on to the penalty clause. Anybody have any suggestions?
Well, I guess I kind of feel that we, at the last meeting, I wasn't here, but it was turned down to break up that sentence, or the loss of the license, you know, into different days, or different groups of days. So I feel that, that we felt pretty strongly that the 15 days consecutive was warranted if the information that we got tonight was that there was a violation committed. So I feel kind of strongly about having the 15 days consecutive. I don't really have a hard, I mean, an opinion on when those should be served. If any concession, I don't know if we can make a concession on the dollar amount of that violation, if we...
I guess we can, right?
You've got the authority to do that, the grid specifies 15 days and $1,000. You've heard, you know, what they presented as the mitigating factors, you've got the discretion to consider those, you should also consider the extent to which anything that you're doing could have some precedential value on the next case, but every case is different, and you just need to decide, you know, make a decision that you're comfortable with tonight.
And that's the hard part, is you are setting precedence, so anybody that has a violation can come and, you know, plead their case, and then we're stuck on, you know, well, why did we do it last time? And, you know, there was a lot of thought put into setting up the grid, I know that there was a lot of thought and a lot of talk about how we should set that up and the amounts, that I feel pretty strongly not deviating from them, especially because we know a violation did occur.
Well, our one code does talk, and I mentioned this last time, under subdivision four, that the city council can determine the length of the license suspension, the propriety of the revocations, and shall apply this to all premises licensed under this chapter. These penalties are presumed to be appropriate for every case, however, the city council may deviate in an individual case where the city council finds that there exist substantial reasons making it more appropriate to deviate, such as, but not limited to, a licensee's efforts in combination with the state or city to prevent the sale of alcohol to minors. And I mentioned at the last meeting that we had not heard anything in that effort, and today, what I hear is great, but that should have been happening all along, so I don't know if I still see, don't see that as substantial and compelling. So that's kind of where I stand on this.
I guess my take on it is, receiving a phone call from one business in the community that had previous offense, and they had two times in 15 years, and they received seven days without a license, and their employee had jail time and things like that, I don't...
Was that their third or second?
That was their second time, is what they had notified me. And I'm agreeing, you know, it's great that we're moving forward, that everybody's being trained on that aspect, but, you know, we're setting a precedence in the community, and we, you know, the previous council drafted the ordinance, and I feel being it's a third violation, that we should stick with the 15 days and a fine of some sort. I'm not saying they have to be consecutive days, but maybe we warrant, you know, a week, and then we break it up and do two days a week for a period to finish it out. So we do seven consecutive, and then, you know, to have some merit in it, but I struggle with it, too, you know, it's, we all enjoy eating there and dining and things, and...
So your proposal is they pick a seven-day stretch, and then the following eight days would be at, as they schedule?
As they schedule it.
I would assume the city would need a due date within a week or so, Counselor, with that?
I think the sooner the better would be appropriate.
So that would, everybody knows the dates. Okay.
I guess my question then would be, is what is the extenuating circumstance that we are seeing that would make us deviate? Not to put you in the spot.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, you know, I, the next person that comes up, you know, what's our, we need a reason to deviate, and if we have a reason, I think that's great, you know, and maybe that reason is because that employee wasn't here to defend himself and to, you know, they're accepting the responsibility, and maybe that's, I don't know.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. President, Counselor Fisher, I think you raised a valid point in that subdivision four gives the council the authority to deviate, indicates if you deviate from the presumptive sentence, which is the 15 days consecutive and the $1,000, that we need to have written findings supporting the reason for doing that. So you're absolutely free to do it, but we would need to have you explain those tonight so that I could prepare those, so we could commit them to writing, so...
I could ask a question of the city attorney, that very top of, well, paragraph D, at the second page of the city code that was included, the last sentence of that top paragraph says the occurrence of multiple violations is grounds for deviation from the presumed penalties?
Which, you're looking at, would appear on page 75.
The paragraph I'm looking at is D, other violations, and it goes from the bottom of one page to the top of the next page?
There's no further explanation of that. It could be deviation, could be more severe, I mean, technically, the council would have the right to revoke the license. That hasn't been discussed by anyone yet, but I think that indicates that, yes, you could, you could deviate, so, and I don't, again, there's no further explanation, I don't know if they mean if you had three violations occurring the same night, the same server, or a group of people, or something like that. There's a lot of different reasons why action could be required, so it's not really clear exactly what that means. But I think the council has got the discretion. There is language on the page before that in paragraph B that says, "Suspension or revocation periods indicate consecutive days of license suspension." Again, I think you've got the discretion to do whatever you want to do, so, these are more advisory than anything. But it is, I mean, as Counsel Urson Fisher pointed out, this is something that some work was put into, a grid was established, there are questions of precedent, but you also will be looking at each case on its merits individually.
I might as well give my two cents worth on it, pondering back and forth with the councilors. I mean, I realize it's a tough situation, bam, 15 days, am I correct that this is actually the first time the city council has ever dealt with a three infractions?
As far as I know, it is, I'm not aware of any...
I don't recall any third.
I don't believe we've had three before.
Okay, because I'm always concerned with that, setting the precedence, you hear that a lot from the public, well, you're treated this firm like this, this individual like this, this fence issue like this, I mean, I'm actually leaning towards, do we do, here's what the ordinance says, let's enforce it. Do we do the 15 days and/or do we not even do a fine, or do we do the $1,000 fine? We have that option.
Well, I guess I'm in between both of you. It's just, it's really tough, you know, it's just, like Lisa made the comment, that make an exception, we realized that we didn't have a conviction, it is the first time, so that is something we could take into consideration, and do a split based on that merit, but I guess I'm leaning toward, more toward, Dave, I think, my own personal opinion is, I would do 15 days and get it over with, and everybody knows when it is, and it's said and done. I mean, if I'm going to go out there and eat, and I don't know which two days he isn't going to have it during the week, it's just, I think 15 days, I mean, it's, sounds harsh, but right away to go.
And I guess, I, when I was recommending the 15 days, I was trying to be consistent with previous council where they did a seven-day in a row for a prior business, and then give the business an opportunity to pick the other eight days, that was just...
Am I correct, though, that that was a second violation, not a third?
That was a second violation, they had seven days. And I'm just trying to not set a precedence, and just trying to be consistent with what previous council had done years back. And, and we do have it set up on our grid for 15 days and/or $1,000, you know, to include a $1,000 fine, so I think, you know, them telling us, you know, that they're improving their, you know, training, practices on that aspect, I would probably be using that for their opportunity to pick the other eight days, and...
Mm-hmm.
But we're staying consistent with 15, then.
I think that's what everybody's talking about, everybody agrees that it should be 15 days, it's just a matter of how we want to do those 15 days, that's what we need to agree on, I guess.
Right.
I would assume the $1,000, in my opinion, would be an automatic, we wouldn't have to deviate from that, but we need to come up with something if we want to do seven and eight, or 15 straight.
Mr. President, could I speak again? Just a couple things, I guess, to reiterate, and again, I know you talk about precedent, and there is some precedent, you know, for some latitude here, if nothing else. Again, the, I bring up the Brown County Egg Society, I don't know if any of the, maybe I'm uninformed, but I'm not sure how much alcohol the egg society sells between December 25th and December 29th. I mean, if they do, is the council aware of any? I mean, as far as I know, they sell alcohol during the Brown County Fair and no other time, I mean, that was a totally meaningless penalty.
Was that their second violation? Was that their second violation as well, or?
I don't know.
Couldn't that be their first?
Must have been their second. I don't know. So we wouldn't even hear the first one.
Yeah, for seven.
Was that, was that the fair board, or was it?
It was the fair.
Fair board.
I don't really remember that one coming in front of us.
But does anyone, could anyone tell me what real penalty they suffered between Christmas and December 29th? So I'm just bringing that up.
You're talking about third violation here, and a fourth one, he loses his liquor license permanently, permanently. It's a different story here.
Yeah, well, he's well aware of that.
Yeah.
Believe me, he's well aware that the next violation, we won't be here asking for which days to serve. But I just bring that up, and, and again, the other thing, we would like, if nothing else, you know, if it's going to be 15 days, you know, we'd like a little latitude there as to, you know, maybe you could set some parameters during a certain time period, and again, someone had suggested, maybe we could, we could inform the council and law enforcement as to what exactly those days might be, you know, between now and the end of the year or something. Again, his business is suffering already because people believe he doesn't have a liquor license, when in fact he does presently.
That's why sometimes it might be better just to get it over with and...
It might be, but I, but I guess what I'm asking is if the council would let him make that decision as to what, you know, would be best for him in this situation. Either way, he's going to suffer, he's not going to be able to sell alcohol on the days that his license is suspended. And I guess we're just asking that, maybe if we could have a little latitude in what those days might be.
Question for the city's legal counsel. I mean, the city attorney have any issue with that or not?
Well, again, my concern is that we get the days defined as soon as possible, and that the city is aware, so that law enforcement is going to know if they see indications that beer or alcohol is being sold during the period of suspension, they know that there's been a violation. And I don't think we can, you know, we shouldn't be waiting for three weeks or four weeks. If you want to, you know, give a deadline, you know, quite frankly, one option you would have would be to say, you know, you've got until 5:00 PM next Monday.
I was going to say, is one week ample time?
Right. And then, and then if you, and if you don't, if you have not notified the city the dates, starts, you know, the next day, so that it's clear that there's going to be 15, if you decide on 15 days consecutive, when they're going to start. And if there would be any way Mr. Campbell could provide you with that information tonight, it would be even better, just so we could make this very clear on when the period is going to be. I don't know if he's prepared to give an opinion on that.
Well, we'd prefer to, if we could have a week, just to, yeah, to think it through. And again, we could give it, provide it to the city manager in writing, the days, so I wouldn't be aware of it by a specified date. And again, you know, we would just like a little latitude as to what those days might be. Because again, as, you'll certainly suffer, his business will suffer on those days, and again, it's, it's already suffering, so...
If the council's going to consider that, I think you definitely need to impose a deadline, and the licensees suggested at any time this year, I think you'd want to have it within a shorter timeframe.
Yes.
You pick whatever you think is appropriate, whether it's during the balance of the license period, or presuming that there's going to be an application for renewal carrying into the next period. But I think you'd want to know that it's going to be completed by a date certain, if you decide to give them the latitude to have some input into when it would be scheduled.
Well, I'll try a motion. We'll see if we can move this forward a little bit. I'm going to offer a motion that we have, work with me here, folks. 15-day suspension, seven days of which must be completed prior to June 30th, 2017. Balance of the hours to be scheduled on or before the end of October 31st, 2017. With specific days to be given to us by the Plaza manager within seven days, and a maximum fine of $1,000. How'd I do on that? Did I miss anything, Counselor?
I don't believe so, Counselor Schultz.
Understandable? June 30th for the first seven days.
Second.
We got a motion in the second. More discussion?
Oh, I guess I didn't say and removal from the best practice grid for one year. So that okay with you?
Correct. Second. Any more discussion?
I would agree with it. I, I'm, I think it's being consistent with seven days, and then I think we're working with them on, on the other eight and giving them an opportunity.
And I think the substantial and compelling reason to me would be what Plaza's doing now, but also the fact that we didn't have a conviction on the individual. I think that's an unusual precedent that we probably would not see that often, more than likely.
I guess...
Substantial and compelling enough, Roger? Little wimpy?
No, I don't think so. And I think what you're doing is, the only deviation is that the days aren't consecutive.
Correct.
They might be. If the licensee decides to just get it done and run them all concurrently, there wouldn't be any deviation at all. But if, if you consider it a deviation, and it's based upon the fact that there was not a criminal conviction, a lot doesn't really determine whether the violation happened or not that's been admitted to. That would be sufficient.
I guess, I, I think it's, I myself think it's spread out a little bit too long, giving them until October, just because the license does end in June. And what if they put that name in, that license in the name of somebody else? I think that it should be fall back, at least while this license is still valid.
So you're saying until the June 30th?
It would be possible, even due to seven consecutive days, if they'd get going early, you still got another six weeks after that to drag it out for two days here, there.
I think Counselor Fisher raises a valid point, that the license is issued to a corporation. And if there's a different corporation that applies for the next license, that's not, now, depending upon the owners, that's why we asked for this information, that doesn't necessarily mean they could avoid the penalty. They may not get a license if there's issues with the application. So I mean, we don't hear anything that that's anticipated or planned here. But it would eliminate any possibility of that if it was done before June 30th.
Mr. President, I guess we would certainly be more in favor of what Mr. Schultz, Counselor Schultz, had suggested. The seven days before June 30th, and then the remaining eight days before the end of October would certainly be preferable for us, as opposed to getting all 15 days in before June 30th. And I know there's, there's always the possibility of a different licensee, but as a practical matter, that's not going to happen, so...
Right? Any more discussion?
See where it goes. Counselor remanded.
All right, we do have a motion in the second, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Close, no?
No.
Assistant Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher? No. Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3A, consider motion approving issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the New Ulm Girls Fast Pitch Softball Association to conduct raffle gambling.
I'll offer that motion.
Second. Got a motion in the second, that's for Saturday, June 17, 2017. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Item 3B, consider motion approving the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for Cathedral of Holy Trinity to conduct bingo, raffle, and pull tab gambling at Cathedral of Holy Trinity, and that's for June 25th, 2017.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion in the second, any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Close, no? Motion carries. Item 4A, number one, consider resolution approving amendment of plat, the final plat of Retzlaff First Edition located at 106 and 107 Monument Street, and waive the read, waive the need for public hearing.
I'm just going to add, the planning commission recommended approval. We had this at our last meeting last month, or two meetings ago for the council for approval, but there was an error on an old plot, so we had to correct that, and so just a little more documentation to...
So all offer resolution approving the amended plat, final plat of Retzlaff First Edition Building located at 106 and 117 Monument Street, waive the right to a need for public hearing, along with conditions stated, which is electronic file of the plat, and execute the records and deeds necessary to establish the ownership of the parcels, and approve the amended plat.
Second. We got a motion in the second, offer resolution, wait reading, any more discussion? See none? Assistant Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher? Yes. Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 4B, number one, consider variance request from Josh and Lindsay Dolug to conduct a, construct a fence two feet into the side of the rear yard setback on a property legally described as Lot 8, Block 142, north of Center Street. Address is 19 North Franklin.
Just like to add, the Board of Zoning recommended approval. We did hold a public hearing, we had no complaints from any of the neighbors. If you look at your information packet, you'll see an existing fence that's in the rear already, that's been there probably 30-plus years, that is on the line. So, you know, and another reason they're stating that they would like to stay within the two foot instead of the five feet, if you look on the pictures on your packet, is that they don't want to end up removing their trees. And it is a narrower than normal alley, and they want to keep it in line with their existing garage that's on the alley side. So they want to balance it out, but yet they're moving their rear fence in, which is currently on the property line. And I know, we know it's a special circumstances, you know, we're setting a precedence and that, but otherwise, if we go to five feet, they're going to have to remove their trees, and on that nature, they'd like to keep them for a buffer zone. So we felt, you know, recommending approval of the variance.
And I comment on that, I do know the city in unique situations like this has issued fence variances in the past. So all motion to accept the variance request of Josh and Lindsay Dolug, hope I did that right, to construct a fence two feet into the side yard and rear yard setback on property legally described as Lot 8, Block 142, north of Center Street.
I'll second.
We got a motion in the second, any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Item 4C, receive notification from the Safety Commission of the revised meeting day and time. I guess that's for first Thursday of the month at 5:00 PM.
I was attending that meeting, and it's getting more and more difficult for people to come to a noon meeting. A lot of the, one of the safety committee members may have to be replaced because just cannot get here at noon. They're the only commission that was working at noon, and that's one of the reasons they...
And they preferred 5:00, not 4:30, like a lot of the other meetings are moving to?
Yeah, because of, again, those work schedules.
I'll offer, I'll offer the motion to receive the notification from the Safety Commission of the revised meeting day and time of the first Thursday of the month at 5:00 PM.
Second.
We got a motion in the second, any more discussion?
I'm assuming we have to get some things changed on our website and other places where that's...
Calendar.
Yeah, well, the calendar will have to wait until the new calendar.
Yeah, but maybe we have an online calendar.
We could have Brian go around to everybody's calendar in the city and with a sticker.
Send out a sticker and change it.
Mr. President, it's my understanding administration already has updated the website.
Yeah, okay.
There was a little conflict with the tree commission, that's another reason they wanted to wait till 5:00, but it'll work for them.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Item 5A, receive previously opened bids and consider award a contract for the 2017 street alley, utility street and alley improvement group one project. Mr. Kaler?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're pleased to inform the council that we received four bids on this project, our large bit, project for the year, the low bid being a local contractor at about $3.25 million, M&amp;R Paving. We tabulated all the bids, we found some errors in Quam construction, but they still were not the low bidder, so we're recommending that the contract be awarded to M&amp;R Paving for $3,253,213.77, and there's a bid tab attached.
I'm going to offer that motion, I'm very glad to see multiple bids this time.
Second.
We got a motion in the second, any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Close, no? Motion carries. Item 5B, one and two, consider ordinance annexation of the property of the, to the City of New Ulm pursuant to the Minnesota Statute, Section 414.03, or 033.
Mr. Chair? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Since our counselor worked so hard already today, I will offer a motion to waive the second reading of that ordinance, and offer a motion also to adopt this motion, which is 17-013, fifth series, and had to do with annexation of property, so pretty standard stuff.
Second.
Second. We have a motion in the second, any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Item 6A, consider setting a public hearing date for noise variance to the city code 8.08 noise restrictions as requested by David Cranbeer, Creative Concrete Specialties, New Ulm, Minnesota, and that's for May 16, 2017, at 4:30 PM. They're going to do some concrete demolition.
I'll offer that motion.
Second. We got a motion in the second, any more discussion?
We don't have a lot of housing in that area anyway, do we?
Just a little across the street.
There's about four or five houses that would fall.
Yeah, not much. But they'll get a notification.
In case somebody don't know, it's, it's a driveway to McDonald's parking, or restaurant, so... All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Item 6B, consider motion confirming appointment of Daniel Koch to the Human Rights Commission.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion in the second, any more discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Koch.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Point, or close, no? Motion carries. Item 6C, consider motion to schedule the first city council meeting in July 2017 for Wednesday, July 5th, 2017, at 4:30 PM, due to the Fourth of July holiday falling on the first Tuesday of July.
Move to schedule the council meeting to July 5th, 2017, at 4:30, due to the Fourth of July holiday.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion?
Just briefly, I would maybe just throw out the option that if there's not, you know, it's a holiday week, I don't know if anybody's planning on vacation or not, but I, if this, if our chair of the board, the council decides there's not enough on the agenda to warrant a meeting, you could always cancel a meeting, I would assume, correct, with some notification?
I'm sure Brian is going to find something to put on it.
Probably, but I would just, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know if there's people, I'm not planning on anything, but I don't know if anybody else is...
Well, I'm hoping to have some more people to fill in the empty commission chairs, but I think it'd wait another month.
Okay.
Or two weeks.
Or two weeks.
We have another council meeting.
Yeah, we got two more before they had.
Okay. Just as an option, I don't know.
It's always an option.
We'll see when we get closer to it.
Sure. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 7A, consider acceptance of a list of claims paid and approval of list of claims to be paid. The amount paid is $2,904,417.26 and the amount to be paid is $798,546.67.
I'll offer the motion to accept the list of claims to, and approve the amount to be paid of $798,546.67.
Second.
And that also included the amount of claims paid and the amount of $2 million?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. With no more business, meeting adjourned.